We're back from the meeting in the city council. At the end of the meeting, we will be going into executive session with KRS 61.8101. Discussions of proposed litigation against the city of Bardstown regarding the presentation of an offer of settlement. The discussion is concerning the offer of settlement. I'll be doing that at the end of the regular meeting here. Don't have any formal requests to identify any groups or individuals. Is there a group or individuals that need to address the council tonight?
There's some officers here talking about urban chickens and just kind of see if y'all have any questions on urban agriculture.
Yeah, we have an agenda item.
That's one I want to speak up just in case.
And then is there any other, anyone else here from the public would like to address the council on any other issues not on our agenda?
Mayor, Ms. Bill Atreya, if she didn't stand around, this would have been the time I would have asked her to address the council in terms of her request to be removed from the historic district. And just to give a brief description, there's two issues you all would have to address there. One would be the process, you know, the process of going through that and considering that. Then the other would be the substantive part of that, which is, you know, would there be, is there a reason to entertain that? In terms of the process, again, you'd have to go, you all would have to make a request or someone would have to make a request, I think it would have to be you all, to have the planning commission and historic review board consider removing the property. And then that recommendation would come back to you all. More importantly, I think is the substantive part of that, and that is, you know, what would be the criteria for, you know, would someone actually meet the criteria for being removed from the historic district? And I think that they, I think that you would never say never, but, you know, "I don't want to meet the criteria, so I want to be removed," would probably basically, would essentially negate your historic district, because then people would come in probably in droves and say, you know, "I don't want somebody looking over my shoulder." So, I don't think it's a process that I would recommend. And I think that the criteria, the standard that you would have to meet to approve that with the funding that we receive and the recognition that we receive, I think that the substance of that would be extremely, you would have a hard time justifying that action, probably in the court of law, but also in the court of public opinion.
Where is the boundary exactly? Is she on the boundary?
Yes.
Is it murer there?
To a certain extent. It kind of wavers quite a bit, you know, including a little map. It kind of is a very unique circumstance, but yes.
But, I mean, we've got a corner of the block and started, it'll never stop.
I think it'd be a bad precedent, you know, then you'd have people start asking, "Well, I'd like to be removed from the city limits because I'd rather just pay county taxes," you know, and it'd just be a free fall. I think the district has been nothing but a major asset to the community in the sense it was created, and I think it would be a bad precedent to start having hearings on people wanting to be removed, and it would just...
And the point that I was trying to make is that an individual just can't come in and apply for that. It would have to be an action that you all would have to take, to recommend that action to be taken. So, the question originally was, can I have the application form for that? And the answer is, there is no such thing. It would have to be you all's action.
Unless we have a motion to start that process, and we don't have that process in place at this time.
Correct.
This might, I hope it's not off the subject a little bit, but there's been discussions about how do you actually notify somebody or that when they buy a piece of property, they realize they're in the historic district? And there is nothing there, really.
When a realtor's involved, typically that is disclosed. Now, in this case, I think she bought it directly from the homeowner, and that's why she probably did it. But, once she started talking about her shade, like in April, she knew there was regulations.
You're talking about, but you're talking about Joe Sutson out there. Well, you used to have little signs that marked the boundary of the...
They're still there.
Are they there?
Yeah, they're still there, but they're getting along in the two. That was done in David Hall's area.
But typically, then, they're on top of it with the notice of stop work order or something. That stops, that should stop the clock, and then you get your opportunity to stop working with the HRB or do things in a compliant manner.
Yeah, in this case, she wasn't harmed by the fact she, if she didn't know at some point when she bought it, you know...
Well, there's tax incentives too. When you do it, you could qualify for some tax incentives, which lowers the cost of allowing this extra...
And she had, she contacted somebody with the state and talked about that.
Well, that's why I asked the question, did she suspect that she was in the historic district? And she said, yes. And then she contacted, so... But that is an effort, that should be an ongoing effort, and I'm sure, you know, many a year ago, there was an outreach to the Realtors Association to do some sort of training or notification. Perhaps it's time to do that again and maybe consider, and HRB is the one that does this, that maybe they can consider additional outreach with the Heritage Council's direction or input. Maybe there's some things that we can do that...
She is us, and we're trying to even pass at least two or three of them.
Yes. But just the fundamental, who's in, who's out, be aware of it, you know, that kind of thing.
Unless there's a motion to pursue a process where you'd allow people to apply to be removed, I would see that as anything we want. I think it would be a bad precedent to go down that road.
But to Joe's point, is there somebody, the homeowner, can be made aware that they're buying a historic home, even if they buy it from an individual?
Who's going to be the one to be...
No, I'm just asking.
I'm bringing up some things that are always brought up in discussions.
Yeah, we could try to do a better public outreach, that's what I say in the historic review board, and probably there's some things that they can do, and with technology.
Can it be done at the dean room level? Can something be attached to it in that manner where the dean, if the dean changes hands, you know, can that, or before it changes hands, can that be made, make the homeowner be made cognizant of it?
If there was going to be, my thing, the PBA level with the layer on their map or a notation on their card or whatever, but I don't know...
Nobody looks at that.
Nobody looks at that. Well, nobody looks at the old deeds.
And the PBA's a state officer and county clerk. We don't think we have any jurisdiction with her to require her to do it, so it is a problem, but it's like any ordinance that you'll, I'm sure that 90% of the people in town don't know 90% of ordinances in our books, but you know...
You know, it's just like homeowners association. A lot of people buy property and not aware of what the homeowners association says and what their...
But if they're, it's something a diligent property owner should, should book.
But once they're in violation, like HOA or even here, they usually find out.
Yeah, if she found out, boy, she'd go off the sign, you know, and chose ignore the stop work orders, twice.
Okay. See no other, no other input from the public. Next item on our agenda is for urban agriculture, and I think Mr. Nick Kipper's going to make the presentation to the council on this subject.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I hope I've taken up a lot of y'all's time. I know we've got a pretty ambitious agenda tonight. I also want to assure all of y'all, and Mr. Goins in particular, that our group is aware that y'all are not voting on anything tonight. This is merely or primarily an introductory session, just where we could decide to provide y'all information, answer questions, and hopefully then, you know, one or two members of the council will decide to take up the issue and have the ordinance written to be voted on later. So we do understand the process. Basically, this is something that has come up before in this community, and last time I was involved, and before that, again. And urban agriculture has grown a lot in popularity over the last several years, particularly with the recession in the early 2000s. People started getting, kind of feeling insecure, and they want to take control of their own life. The extension office has told us that interest in home gardening, home food production, and canning, all of that stuff picked up at that time. And basically, urban chickens have as well, countrywide, although not here in Bardstown, but basically that's one type of livestock that you can feasibly raise on a small acreage where you're not, you know, you're not infringing on the neighbors. It doesn't require much land, and so on. A number of communities have embraced it and made provision for it. Louisville, Lexington, Bowling Green, most of the larger cities in the U.S. permit people to raise chickens. And some of them permit more than that, but we're not asking for more than that. People basically, like I said, the interest is self-sufficiency and food safety and food security. There's also some other benefits or environmental benefits. When you consider that your food travels 1,400 miles on average to get to your table, there has been a growing interest in, with the environmental movement, with local agriculture, locally sourced stuff. If you go to a restaurant, they're going to tell you what's on the menu that's local. You go to Kroger, they'll tell you what's on the shelf that's local, Kentucky Proud, and all of that. So people are wanting local food, and there's nothing more local than your backyard. It's also a good educational opportunity for kids, forage projects. I had chickens for several years. My son knew how to take care of the chickens. He knew we had to feed the chickens and give the chickens water, and in return, they gave us eggs. So he, he doesn't think eggs come from the supermarket. Eggs come from chickens, and milk comes from cows. So it's, it's an educational process, just to have it out there in the community. Also, you know, why are you so interested in this? It is a hobby, but it's a productive hobby. I mean, I don't judge people that play golf, you know, or play cards or whatever. I mean, that's just, this is what I do. I have a garden, I have a lot of flowers, I like to dig in the dirt, I have animals. Basically, people's concerns center around sight, sound, and smell. They don't want an eyesore, they don't want to hear a lot of racket, and they don't want to smell an animal livestock next door. Chickens, unless you have them overcrowded, are not going to be a problem on any of those areas. They're a lot cleaner than dogs, they're quieter than dogs, they don't holler at the fire trucks, they don't bark at people walking down the sidewalk, they don't get loose and attack people, and they don't bark at night. So, I mean, chickens are a lot less annoying than dogs. As far as being clean, the ordinance or sample ordinance that we've generated, that y'all have, we're looking at 12 hens. And 12 hens are not going to produce any more manure than the average black lab. And people have dogs successfully all the time, we're not littered with dog feces, we're not littered with, you know, smelly dogs, we're not constantly being, I mean, we do hear dogs barking, but, you know, that's just one of those things, and there is a remedy for that. Basically, the ordinance that we worked up, and I'll go over the points in it, no more than 12 hens. And of course, you know, the ordinance itself will have to get deeper into the weeds and definitions and all that. No roosters, so there's no crowing at the crack of dawn. Also, one thing that's a big concession was the setbacks from the neighboring properties. If you're going to put anything on your property, a playground, tool shed, doghouse, you're going to put it at the edge of your yard. But we have, the ordinance that we have says that that has to be in coop, has to be 15 feet from the property line. And coops and pens have to be 25 feet from a residence. So we're not putting it right under somebody else's nose because we don't want it at our back door. The facilities have to be kept clean, feed has to be kept secure where rodents can't get into it. Chickens are not permitted to roam off the property. And facilities can be inspected at any time. Permit is required, so we're going to have, basically, the county extension service is willing to go out and do inspections when somebody makes application. You would notify them, they go out and look, see that the people are meeting the criteria, that they know what they're getting into, and they're set up to handle. And if they don't comply with that, unless they have their chickens, then they get the permit revoked. Also nuisance concerns as far as noise and smells and animal welfare. We didn't know how, what to do with that. That was something that kept coming up, and basically that just went straight out of the county dog ordinance and adapted, you know, taking out the barking and hollering and all that. But basically, that's it in a nutshell. I would just point out that chickens don't necessarily, you know, there are chickens in Bardstown now, there's other livestock in Bardstown now. They're not bothering people. I had chickens for years, they didn't bother anybody. There are other people in this room who had chickens for years, and they didn't bother anybody. And at some point, you get discovered for whatever reason, you know, the meter reader sees them, the neighbor that has found out you're not supposed to have them, so therefore you shouldn't have them. Those people report you, and you're at their mercy. And as far as enforcement, you know, that's how enforcement is done now. If there's a complaint, they investigate to see if the person's in violation, then the person has to correct situation and pay a fine or pay a fine. And it would be no different if you could, if it was allowed to be unlegally. If somebody had a problem, they could just report the problem, the same way they do now. You know, right now, the complaint is, there are chickens. It's not that they're loud chickens or dirty chickens or free ranging chickens, it's that the chickens exist. And in fact, you know, these big cities accomplish it, and it's not chaos and mayhem, and I don't know why it would have to be here. And I'm done unless some group has something to add.
Good job.
Did you say you have to talk to the extension?
Yes. Basically, they're here in the community to support agriculture. They go out and look at fruit trees, vegetables, flowers, and hay and cattle, and they're here to support the community in agricultural endeavors.
They put them on farmer's market.
Right.
You're saying they've already agreed to, if this were to pass, they would agree to be part of the enforcement?
Yes.
Maybe so.
Right. They would go out and certify that you met the criteria that would give you, you know, check your setbacks, make sure you're far enough away from the neighbors, make sure you, your feed is handled properly, that your birds are handled properly, and all that stuff before the permit would be approved.
But who will do the inspecting? You mentioned inspecting.
That would be, the extension office would do that.
They're going to come back and inspect periodically?
If there was a, if there was a, I guess they would if there was going to be...
If there's a complaint?
If there's a complaint. They're not going to just go out and check on them if there's no complaint. It's to follow up and see that the people are in compliance. And basically, there's not going to, if people are, if people are complying, there's not going to be any complaints. And like I said, I had chickens for three weeks, and there was a city council that drove by them all the time, and I never had a complaint on my chickens. What got me in trouble was a neighbor who had free range chickens. Now, they came looking for those chickens. Well, I didn't tell them where they were because it didn't matter, because my chickens were, their existence was the problem, not that they were running around in front of Thompson's Food Market. And so, you know, it can be controlled, it can be managed like dogs or anything else that we do. And also, I need to point out that, you know, the ordinance, and I don't guess it could be written any other way, if you're in a subdivision that doesn't permit chickens, if you're in the historic district, whatever other rules apply, they are going to apply to you as well. So if you're going to build a coop in the historic district, you've got to get it passed HRB. It has to meet their requirements. If you're going to put up a pen, you've got to be so many feet off the property line. And if you're going to put up a coop, you've got to be even more feet off the property line, if y'all go with what, with what we produce.
So how many people are here on this issue? All right? How many, everybody in favor of it then? Is anybody opposed to it? Okay.
Now, like I say, you know, there are, there's a lot of interest in the community, and I don't think that, you know, you're going to have 100 people raising chickens. I have a page, Facebook page, that I started a couple of years ago when this came up, and I have 900 followers. And they basically support, even if they don't want to raise chickens, they support my right to do it and do it in the right way on my property. And that's, that's the key. I'm not trying to keep anybody else's backyard when I have them on my property, and I want to be respectful to my neighbors. Any other questions? Yes, Mayor?
I see that you have the Jets with you. Is it possible that we can, they're a young couple. They moved from Louisville. Can we hear from them? Because I actually posted a video on my Facebook page, and their son was asking the council, "Why can't we have chickens?" So I, I would really like to hear from you guys. You're a young couple, you're from the urban area, and rural. And I would just like to hear from you guys because I listen to your son. So I want to hear from you guys. I really want to hear what you have to say. Please.
We may have, let's see, we may have took Bardstown from Louisville three years ago?
Three years ago. Now, in the city of Louisville, you know, you can walk down Southern Parkway, and they've got horses, goats, chickens, pigs. We had a friend in a neighborhood that had a neighbor that had a pig, so, you know, Louisville can do it. I don't understand why small town, southern America can't do it. That's, that's kind of where I was lost. I was very upset to find out I couldn't raise chickens. And for me and my family, we're a family of five, three small children. We only want four. You know, we don't want to raise enough chickens to sell to all the neighbors with eggs. We just want it for our family. And some of the good points with chickens is they do reduce your trash, because they will eat your kitchen scraps. They control mosquitoes, they eat mosquitoes. And if you are in the urban agriculture, you know, they do fertilize your garden as well. So, I mean, I raise, if I don't raise, I grow a ton of tomatoes, you know, I have a full garden. So I love to be able to produce the fertilizer on my own. But more importantly, I want to be able to, you know, teach that to my children and pass that along with them, so...
In my own experience, my brother, he lives in Floyd's Knobs, and he's got, what, five chickens. We go there often, and it, it doesn't smell, they're not loud. I really, there's no unpleasant aspect of being around the chickens, so...
Thank you. You know, this kind of follows in with the filiatry case. We've got laws that are written, any of these people, and I'm not saying you all won't be all responsible, but there's always somebody that's not. You talk about dogs, you talk about saying that they present more of a, my yard's full of dog food, and I live right in the city, because people don't follow the rules. They don't pick up after their dog, and I don't appreciate it. I think, and Nick, I know you're responsible, I know most of you are, but I've got a daughter that lives across from the library. You've got renters in there. What happens if they start? Years ago, what's going to stop the rabbits? We ran a family out that was raising rabbits. They weren't bothering anybody years ago. He was raising them to eat, he was raising them and taking care of them, but he chose to go to the county because there he could raise his rabbits. That's how I feel about y'all talking about the filiatry case. You know, it's in our ordinances. It's our responsibilities to find out what we can do when we buy our homes in town. And one of the main ordinances says no animals other than a dog on a leash, which isn't even, a lot of times carried out now. And who's going to enforce it? We can't even enforce homes that need repair. We don't have the manpower in the city. We're talking about higher taxes. And that's great. Like I said, you know, I understand y'all wanting to do it, but it's going to take, you know, we've got ordinances. Move to the county. You should have investigated more to find out. But I am very opposed to it. I don't think we have the manpower for the city. I mean, we don't have the manpower now to go and condemn homes that need condemning. We don't have the manpower to follow people around to keep the town clean up town. We don't have the manpower to make sure the dog doesn't poop on my yard. And I just don't want that, I don't want that thrown at me or at my daughter or anybody else that's close to me. And I just think, you know, it's, the rules are the rules, the ordinances are the ordinances. And I appreciate them trying to change the ordinance, but if you want to raise chickens, go to the, go to the county. I lived on a farm. You can't, what are you going to do with the chickens when they get too old to lay eggs? We're going to kill them and have supper right there in our backyard? There's just a lot of things more than just this about chickens. There's other neighbors that will be bothered, that the chickens will get loose. And I just, it's just another thing that I don't want to go with in town. I'm following enough rules in town, and I don't want to follow. I just, I don't want it. I just don't want it. And I think if you wanted me to bring more people to show that they were opposed to it, we could do it. But I, at this time, I say no. No animals. I mean, you're only allowed to have, isn't that one of our ordinances? Am I wrong? I think that's one of our ordinances. I think we've got that in there about animals.
There is a provision of farm animals.
Well, chickens are farm animals from what the farm I grew up on.
Same thing, livestock is prohibited when it includes...
And it is what it is.
Including chickens.
Well, that's, I'm expressing, and I hate to shoot anybody's dream down, but, you know, move to the county, and you should have investigated more when you bought your home. Life's not fair. Thank you all for listening.
I appreciate your concern, but every concern that you voiced is addressed by this new ordinance that we've proposed. It also includes manpower for enforcing it. That does not cost the city a penny because it comes from the county extension office. So, yes, the ordinance currently in place is against it, but progress brings change, and we appreciate that you're open to listening to us.
Well, the other thing I want to address, the extension office...
Well, hold on, hold on, hold on. This isn't a debate.
Okay.
So, we have an agenda item that this talks about, presentation.
Okay.
I don't want to get into a pre- running debate here.
May the council speak?
Yeah, sure.
Mr. Kipper, I thank you for bringing us to our attention. Sometimes I stand alone on the Allen, so I'm going to stand alone today, probably. But I have spoke to different people in different cities because that's what we're supposed to do, quote unquote, our homework. And so, you know, I spoke to them, and I asked their feelings as well. I know that we are a beautiful city, but we're really a small town. We are a rural town according to the big cities. If an urban city can do what the rural city is, or the rural town's not going to do, if we're not going to be open, I'm just saying, let's be open minded. You guys worked hard to draft an ordinance, which who would have thought that you would have got the county extension to regulate that program? A permit required, inspection. Permits mean... Permits mean speeds. So, what I know of it, 'cause I had to look deep in, you know, and I was like, wait a minute, you know, rural town, this doesn't seem right. But when I looked deeper into it, because someone sent me a video and a child questioned me. Children are smart. Why not? So I looked deeper and I saw that they're pets. They're actual pets. I live in a neighborhood where a dog craps in my yard every day. Every day. They have a favorite spot. That chicken's not gonna do that. There are coops for them. There are homes for them. I am a grandmother that has two that live with me. What an awesome experience I could give my grandchildren for accountability and responsibility. But also, the green, the green aspect of it. Of course, you know, I am for this. I'm just gonna speak out on it. There's way too many benefits rather than the cons of it. I think that when you're talking about these pets, I even went and researched with our coordinator, Rochelle. 'Cause I asked her, what does she know about this urbanism? And I won't speak on her behalf. What I'm saying is that we are the council. We hold the ordinances. We make changes, we create them. We have to be at least open, open to listen to what they say and not fall on deaf ears. If you even read this, here we are taking a machine, a fogger, that may or may not work. But you have the benefits of someone, not every home, but some homes, that may control their own area of mosquitoes, which is a huge problem in Barstown. I understand the historical district. Believe me, I love the historical district. But these can be made to accommodate the historical district or exit out. To tell citizens and residents of our community to move to the county, that's not quite right. Okay? I mean, that's a little harsh. You know, I love you too. But that's a little harsh. You can't tell people that. You know, you moved to the city because you wanna live in this historical beautiful town. Who are we? As Louisville and City and Lexington has agreed to have these pets, yes, they do lay eggs. I love brown eggs. Are we really city folks? Are we? Are we the city folks that say no to open a new idea?
My ordinance tells me I'm a city folk.
Well, well.
And where I live tells me where I am. Right.
This is just for a presentation.
And I understand that.
Enough to put it into orders.
And I will.
We can take it.
I will. I will do that for you guys, okay? I will do that for you guys.
This is not the right time to really debate.
I'm not debating. I'm making a statement.
One thing, may I say one word about the extension office? I had a house being scraped next to me with lead paint a couple of years ago. The extension office did nothing. They told me I had to contact Frankfurt. The house was scraped with lead paint. And no one came. I called and you know how persistent I can be. No one ever came to stop an order. I'm just saying, all these are fine, wonderful ideas. There's nobody, there's not, I'd like to see it in writing that the extension office would be there to inspect and not charge us. And then that they would take care of the matter and not wait two years.
We may get to that one soon.
Okay. I just wanna share that with you.
I'm gonna move the ordinance around just a little bit. Jessica Filiatry who has a part here, she needs to make a presentation. She has another meeting to get to, so. Go ahead, Jessica, with your presentation.
Yes. John Greenlow with the Nelson County landfill. Every five years, they have to make an update to their solid waste management plan. And since we as the city of Barstown and a garbage collector that takes our solid waste to the Nelson County landfill, we are a participant in that annual update of that plan as a solid waste entity that utilizes the landfill. So basically, what we are needing the council to do tonight is to pass a resolution adopting the Nelson County's Area Solid Waste Management Plan for their 2018-2022 update. And I believe there's only one other piece of paper that they'd ask. And that was just for, to give permission for the mayor to sign the update of area designation, which basically just says that the city of Barstown takes their solid waste to the Nelson County landfill. So it's 22 pages long, but very, very little of it really actually pertains to the city of Barstown.
Well, I actually read it.
Well, that's great.
The only question that I saw, I may have carried over from another application or something. I didn't know, we don't still have three recycling places drop off in town. Do we have to tell just consolidate the gas or opportunity center?
That's correct. We do need to update that to the.
So that's the only thing I saw in it, so.
We might need to, yes, I'll have to make that change too.
Any other questions, Jessica? We do have a resolution number R 2007, 2017-07.
Want me to read that?
Go ahead, present that.
R 2017-07 Resolution, a resolution adopting the Nelson County Area Solid Waste Management Plan 2018-2022 update, whereas the Nelson Fiscal Court is required by KRS 224.43-340 and KRS 224.43-345 to submit an update of the Area Solid Waste Management Plan. And whereas Nelson County Solid Waste Management Area is governed by the Nelson County Fiscal Court, and whereas Nelson County Solid Waste Management Plan 2018-2022 update sets the agenda for the implementation of solid waste reduction and management for the years inclusive of 2018-2022. And whereas a public comment period on the Nelson County Solid Waste Management Plan 2018-2022 update was conducted in the county, now therefore be resolved by the city of Barstown, city council, county of Nelson Commonwealth of Kentucky, that the city of Barstown hereby adopts Nelson County Solid Waste Management Plan 2018-2022 update and supports its action plan, implementation plan, and associated activities. And it's dated today, September 26, 2017.
Thank you, Tim. Motion then to authorize the mayor then to sign off on this resolution, R 2017-07.
So move, mayor.
Motion by Councilman Williams, second.
Second.
Councilman Kelly. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carry. Thank you, Jessica. Okay. Back to the agenda then. We've got a member of HRB, COA, request and recommendations. Do you have the summary, Tim?
Well, yes, but we have one that Councilman Buckman would need to recuse, I believe.
I need to accuse myself of the will of this too.
Okay. Alright.
And I'm the voter, Eric, of Old Barstown Village.
I'll tell you what, let's do, Councilman Kelly can step out. We'll take up the Old Barstown Village application first.
Alright. I have no final answer.
Thank you. Yeah, what we're gonna do is we'll allow him to come back in and take up. Did somebody else, did somebody else have a handful? I mean, besides Councilman Buckman.
No.
Okay. We have Old Barstown Village, COA 17-77, Old Barstown Village Inc., African owner, requesting install signage at the 204 East Broadway Street. Recommendation approval to install the proposed sign. If we can take that, approve or disapprove that recommendation to the historic review board?
I'll make a motion to approve that. COA 17-77.
Second. Motion, the second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carry.
If y'all would ask Councilman Kelly to come back in. And what we'll do is we'll take up the other ones and then we'll allow Councilman Buckman to recuse himself. We have COA 1783, Thomas Webley, applicant owner, request to demolish a shed at 208 North Fourth Street. Recommendation approval to demolish the shed. COA 1784, Thomas Stoneman, applicant, David Lindberg Ball.
Hey, I live in Ball.
Lindberg. House LLC owner, request to demolish the shed at 205 East Stephen Foster Avenue. Recommendation to demolish the shed. The COA 1778 was tabled. COA 1780, Nancy Foster, applicant owner, request to paint the roof at 214 East John Fitch Avenue. Recommendation approval to paint the roof of a rose color. COA 1781, Joe and Caitlin Ballard, applicants owners, request to install a new fence at 208 West Broadway Street. Recommendation approval to install the fence at the proposed location. And I believe the rest are the ones that Councilman Buckman would need to recuse.
Did we miss 1779?
I think Joe was on.
Oh, that's Joe, I'm sorry.
Yep, that's another one.
Joe and Kenny. Joe and Kenny, okay.
That's supposed to be Yenya.
Tell Kenny we said Joe.
Need a motion then for approval of HRB's recommendation for the previous COAs. I'll read the numbers again.
COA 1783, COA 1784, COA 1780, COA 1781.
So move. With all, I don't think there are any conditions on those.
I didn't see.
But in case there is, then I'll make a so move with any conditions.
If.
Motion by Councilman Kelly, second.
Second.
Second, the Councilman knows, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carry. Councilman Buckman.
Don't fall down the steps.
Again.
Again.
Several.
COA 1779, Jerry James, applicant, Joe and I think Jenny Buckman, owners request to install signage at 94 Court Square. Recommendation approval to install the proposed signage. COA 1782, Holden Willet, applicant owner, request to install porch at 206 East Stephen Foster Avenue. Recommendation approval to install porch as proposed. COA 1785, Holden Willet, applicant owner, request to replace vinyl siding with wood siding at 206 East Stephen Foster Avenue. Recommendation approval to replace all vinyl siding with wood siding. COA 1786, Holden Willet, applicant owner, request to replace the wood fence at 206 East Stephen Foster Avenue. Recommendation to install the fence with the following conditions. Conditions, the applicant be installing a three-foot wide gate and the fence design is simply replacing existing fence on property. It is the same height and material. COA 1787, Holden Willet, applicant owner, request to paint the exterior of 206 East Stephen Foster Avenue. Recommendation approval to paint the house with the following conditions. Conditions, the proposed trim color of glacier white is appropriate. The siding color will be staff-approved with the preservation coordinator. COA 1788, Holden Willet, applicant owner, request to install new gutters at 206 East Stephen Foster Avenue. Recommendation approval to install the proposed round gutters.
Okay. Motion then on those.
It's COA 1779, COA 17-82, 17-85, 17-86, 17-87, and 17-88.
Here I make a motion for approval of HRB recommendations as just stated, city attorney with stated conditions.
I'll second it.
Second, Councilman Williams, any other discussion? All in favor, then say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion is carry. Alright, the next item on the agenda is a correspondence from the Craft Beer Festival. I think this is the fifth year for that festival. They've asked for street closure of East Flagee from 2nd to 3rd Street on October 21st. I think the time for the closing would start about noon on 3rd Street entrance to that after County Country Bank closes. County Country Bank's okay with that. They're a sponsor of that festival, so. I think they were closing from noon to about, started there to Commerce Market. So that's, or that's, Methodist Church will conduct any business they have. But there was no time in their request to pass. Organizers, they said the closure would start noon at that age.
Noon, do it two o'clock in the morning, third block?
No, I think they'd be out there by 11 at night.
All over.
Yes. Festival's over at 10.
Better make it to 12.
Even if I move out, don't think there'd be much traffic between 10 and 12.
12 midnight, yeah. I would suggest.
Number 12 AM.
He said PM. I said 12 midnight.
Noon to midnight, we'll get the.
They're asking, requesting recognition of the Craft Beer Festival as a sanctioned event. Is there anything else involved with recognizing it as a sanctioned event? Or is that just verbiage?
We've historically done that in the past, I believe. That's the same verbiage that was in there before. When they initially made the request.
Isn't there a letter drafted? Isn't there a letter drafted to their attention under your signature, sanction the event?
What's the difference between a sanctioned event and any other event?
I guess if sanctioned, it would be more justification to permit a closure that they meet the criteria of a bona fide festival. And their purpose of the festival is fundraising, which they outline here about what they do. Like scholarships for the full-area high schools and other educational efforts, so.
And there's various ordinances that refer to festivals and events. And I think that that would qualify them under those things like.
The sanctions, we support their. Let's support the purpose of it, that it's a fundraiser. It's not a for-profit organization. Mayor, I haven't received the, like all festivals, the milk, Craft Beer, Barstown Festival, they have to produce an insurance liability. That I have not received, remember? Make that a condition of the closure.
I'll make a motion then. I'll make a motion that the city of Barstown sanction the Barstown Craft Beer Festival event and that we approve the closing of the, I believe it's a 100-block of East Flagee Street from noon, October 21st until midnight. On the condition that they provide the proper insurance coverage. It's normally required by the city.
I'll second that, Mayor.
Do we have a motion, the second, is there any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you. If we've got, unless there's any corrections or additions in the minutes, I'd like to approve them by unanimous consent. Special meeting on, tax hearing on 9/12/2017. Special council meeting also on 9/12/2017. Any corrections? We'll just approve that by unanimous consent. We'll just approve that by unanimous consent. Before we get into the ordinances, I think we kind of got this out of order anyhow, I'd like to ask Chief Cressid, she wants to make a presentation to the council because the ordinances we'll be discussing next involve some staffing recommendations that she has from the police department, so Chief, would you go ahead?
Yes, so currently in the structure of the police department, there's a vacancy for the position of lieutenant, and I'm coming to you to ask if we could take that current lieutenant's position and change that to a captain's position. And with that structure, what I'm looking to do is, is to restructure the police department. So it's no shock to anybody that policing is a twenty-four seven operation, and with that, you have to have command and control to adequately supervise police when they're out on the street. And what I would like to do is to have two assistant chiefs. I would like to have an assistant chief over the administrative functions of the police department and an assistant chief over operations. So when you really look at the functions of these two jobs, both of those positions have quite a bit of responsibility. And when you overload one person with all the responsibilities of the jobs, it becomes, the span of control for that one person becomes a liability for not only the police department for, but it increases the liability for the city as a whole. So when you look at the administrative functions that are being carried out, a lot of times that is more of a day work type of responsibilities. Right now, with Assistant Chief Marksberry, he's in charge of the evidence room, he has to take trips to the KSB lab with evidence, he's testifying in court, he's doing a lot of administrative functions with, in those type of duties, which are more typically day work operations where you have to be available during the daytime hours, which does not leave a lot of supervision in the evening hours. And so what I'm looking to do is to take that position that's already vacant and make that an operations assistant chief. But with that, I really want to look at experience and recruit in experience. So with the supervisors that I have now, they're working really, really hard, but the supervise, for the three weeks that I've been there, the experience level is, we're looking at approximately about one year supervisor experience. So we're really wanting to bring in experience, increase narcotics experience, increase the experience in criminal investigations, whether that be homicide, narcotics, our detective experience, and really have that supervision on the street that would not be a Monday through Friday day work, you know, job. It would be a variety of schedules, they're going to be out at two o'clock, three o'clock in the morning, on weekends, at nights, and really be able to mentor and to supervise adequately, not only the supervisors, but the patrol officers. And to, and that would be, I just think, immeasurable and invaluable experience and really bring our police department to the next level, and to have that out there. And I think that will continue to bring our department experience level up and reduce liabilities that it could potentially bring to our city. Any questions?
I love it, I love it. Supervision at night, you know, and splitting those up, I think that's an awesome idea. I have faith in you, because that's unconventional, and I think we need that. We need that, and we need the experience, and that's what you're bringing to us. So I appreciate you thinking outside of the box. Thank you.
So Chief, we're not actually adding any personnel, it's just taking one of the empty positions now and converting it to a captain or an assistant chief type position.
Yes, sir.
What do you give up with the lieutenant position? Is that normally has been a daytime position? So what are you giving up on the days to add that to the night shifts, anything at all?
So this position would be really, I would expect this assistant chief of operation to have a variety of schedule, and so you would not have a set schedule. I would expect them, you know, today they may work ten to six, tomorrow they may work four to midnight, Saturday they may come in and work midnight to eight in the morning. And so I would expect this person coming in to be touching every platoon and to be out on the street with them, to be making runs with the officers, to be mentoring to the sergeants, to be helping with crime scenes. I want someone with tactical experience that is able to be out there, that has that tactical experience, whether it be a hostage situation or high-risk search warrants, that has been in those type of high-risk situations, that is able to mentor to the officers and to the sergeants and to really, I want them to mentor and to continue to train the officers and the sergeants, to really have them be able to continue as we have positions available in the future, for them to have that experience and to learn and to continue to build their careers as they go on.
Thank you.
Chief, I have a question. You mentioned training, can you tell us, in reference to training, where we are and where you want to see us go with this position, and how it could help? You know, I heard you say training, so I just wanted to know what your thoughts are in reference to this position, how critical it could be to have that awarded to you?
I think training is critical for any police department. I think that is probably the number one thing that makes or breaks a police agency. And I think that, well, I know that it is going to be a number one priority for the Barstown Police Department, is training. And I am going to move forward. I've already started myself with training, with Supreme Court cases and really getting out established laws and cases and, you know, starting off road hall training and getting it established now, but I want to see the operations assistant chief, if you so inclined to approve that, I want them to have that on-the-street training every day where they see that in action, whether it be traffic stops or consent searches or search warrants or the execution of search warrants, or just day-to-day patrol operations. I want to see that continue to build and to see that they are utilizing the proper laws and that they know what the law is and that they're implementing those in their day-to-day functions. But training is critical and it reduces our liability as an agency, as a city, and that will be top priority that we continue to do every single day. Work closely with our city attorney, and I read case law every day, and I'm continually pushing that on our officers, emailing that out, and that is something that we will continually stress as we continue on.
Based on our president, command staff, and chief and the assistant chief, I think Greg Ashworth and Chief will have to discuss what this job classification would do in terms of payroll and so forth. We could make this work in our present budget, probably going to be in good shape there, so I don't think it's going to create a budget issue for us. Okay. All right, any other questions? Chief, on that, because this is part of the next item of our agenda tonight, is first reading on the twenty seventeen classification and compensation summary, and Greg, would you like to...
Mayor, I'm asking that the...
Excuse me.
Well, we need to introduce it.
Yeah, okay.
Mayor, if I'm in order of...
I have one question before you do that, please. What about this marketing communications process? It's all in the same summary.
We'll discuss that in a second, please.
Okay, well, you didn't, no one had mentioned it. It's also in the same ordinance, two thousand and seven, classification compensation.
That's great, we'll address that when we have a discussion.
Then we can have reading and then discussion.
Okay. Mayor, if I'm in order, I'd like to introduce ordinance number B two thousand and seventeen, classification and compensation plan, and ask if it be read in summary.
Uh, ordinance B two thousand seventeen, classification compensation plan. An ordinance amending and adopting is amended in ordinance style and ordinance creating classification compensation plan. Summary of ordinance B two thousand seventeen dash fourteen. This ordinance amends ordinance B two thousand sixteen dash ten, B two thousand sixteen dash fifteen, B two thousand seventeen dash eleven, and chapter thirty-five, employment policies, classification plan and compensation plan in the municipal code, amending the number of authorized positions or title and pay grade and setting the ranges for pay grades for city employees for fiscal year two thousand seventeen dash eighteen to subsequent years. The amendment and additions reflecting the positions titled pay grade respectively are: electric and cable TV, strike one, media specialist, part-time, one oh nine. Administration, add one, marketing and communication specialist, one oh nine. Police, strike one, police lieutenant, lieutenant, one thirteen. Add two, strike one, add two, police captain, one sixteen. Change the grade scale as follows, all minimum wages are raised by three percent and all maximum shall be one point five times the minimum. This ordinance or parts of ordinances in conflict, herewith or appealed to the extent of such conflict, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect following the publication and summary provided by law. And I certify, my Tim Butler, I certify, as city attorney, that this was prepared by me.
Okay. I guess we will be in motion, a second and a third, discussion about...
You don't have to have a motion, you can just go straight into the discussion.
First reading of them. Greg, would you like to address the change, more from the part-time position to full-time position with this media specialist to the marketing and communications specialist?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mayor. You know, as we, as our workforce has gotten younger and as the community grows, it's become obvious that we need a larger presence on all media platforms, you know, Facebook, and as we sat here tonight, I've heard Facebook mentioned multiple times, and we need somebody to work with our departments, to communicate with the community and the workforce in recruiting and all kinds of different things. You know, Hannah, as we, Hannah who's our media specialist now, started working full-time. People on Facebook, we've got seven thousand followers on City of Barstown's Facebook page, and they would ask questions, those people would ask questions on our Facebook that would go unanswered, and still have gone unanswered, but since she has taken it over, she's answered those questions, people are asking, they're communicating, she's working with all the other departments now to recruit employees, I think she's worked with Chief Cressid on recruiting police officers. It's just obvious that we need somebody to help us with our recruitment and our media platform. She's also going to continue to do the cables, commercials and marketing, things of that nature, so, and it would carry over to all the other departments, the marketing part of it would carry over to all departments, not just cable now. And that she's going to work with all the department heads on keeping their Facebook, or their, the city's website up to date, so as it pertains to their department, she's going to have them keep that up to date. And it's just, you know, we need, it needs to be moved from a part-time to a full-time position.
So Hannah's filled that position.
Hannah Bowman.
Hannah Bowman is going to fill that position, part-time to full-time. And the other part of this, you know, it's sort of been a hodgepodge how we've kind of handled our digital platform in the city. Nobody, there was really nobody assigned full-time to it. Larry Green did things with it, Hannah did some things with it. We could rely on department heads to kind of police their own part of the website and so forth, so really had no coordinated effort. In today's digital world, I just think it's really important that we have a go-to person that, you know, that knows what they're doing, you don't bog down a department head trying to put something on the website, you know, interrupt their day. You've got a go-to person. Most businesses today, even though we're government, we are a business, multi-businesses under one group, needs a digital expert, specialist, Hannah is that, that's her training and her education, so. We've already found out there's plenty for her to be doing, just doing marketing at a full-time basis as opposed to where it's part-time. So that's why I'm making this recommendation.
So her salary would be divided among all departments, would we be making budget changes or anything?
It would not, as in budget, it's just a budget for Larry Green's salary the whole year, we'll be fine.
Okay. She will straighten that.
Her job description will change and that'll be available in the next reading, but the grade and everything stays the same.
You know, Greg is a senior on the HR part of Larry Green's stuff, and he did a lot of the communication stuff and some of the Facebook and website and taking pictures and all that, which Greg's got enough on his plate, I can tell you, yeah, taking pictures all day long, running around.
Well, his position's consolidated.
Right, he added that on top of his risk management side. You don't need him, you know, Facebook all afternoon, answering. But that's the other thing, you need to respond to these requests. You shouldn't have a customer or complaint or somebody praising us, follow up on that, that needs to happen.
Yeah, if you can keep the information out on the web and Facebook and everything, might reduce the bandwidth, go over calls and coming in, you know, like get the information out that people want to know.
Right. And she very good. If you ever, if you looked at the website, the questions and her answers, she's on top of it.
Of course, I remember you've been having months' years going into ice storm, it was always nice to have like the website or something you can go to and find, okay, when do you think it'll get to my neighborhood? You know, I know a lot of people just, back then, didn't even know when, you know, when their power, when expected or what arrangements they need, but during that time, it would be great that that stuff was there.
And this is the first reading.
This is the first reading.
You don't have to take...
Well, I have a question. Chief, do you envision that you'd be using this as a vehicle to share information for more transparency to the community?
Absolutely, actually I burned Hannah up already, I use her already. You know, we're doing Coffee with a Pop on Friday, and so she, I'm using her to already get that information out through any sites that she has, and I'm working with her to redesign the police department's website, because it's pretty outdated and it's not very user-friendly, so she is already working and spending a lot of time to redesign that and integrate it with the new city's website, so when people come to the City of Barstown's website, they can navigate to the police department's website and really bring that into the twenty-first century, because it's, you know, black and white and it's just really just outdated. And so she has been just a wealth of knowledge, and she is already like coming up with great ideas of how to do a recruiting video. She's actually working on the fire departments now, and then she's going to work with me to do a recruiting video for the police department that we can share on social media. And I tell you, social media is the way to go. You know, we have, that is the way to reach the millennials and to just, to get that out there and to recruit, and she is just, I mean, she is so knowledgeable and so accessible, so she has already been just a wealth of knowledge for me, and we email back and forth and talk often already, so she is just going to be a great asset to have, and she, you know, whatever we need, she's going to be able to fix our websites and get information out, and so she's going to be a great asset.
That frees up, that frees up some of the other IT guys to do their job of answering calls, you know, regarding technical issues, rather than somebody like myself calling down in to the end of the hall and say, you know, I need you to check out this issue. Leave the technical guys to answer customer calls.
Maybe we could do the historical overlays, the cover page.
Just, just...
Okay, this is just the first reading, any other questions, Greg, on that?
No, sir, I'd say...
I was asking, they had any more questions?
Do you have any more questions?
Okay, thank you. Chief, if you need to go, you have one...
I'll go.
All right. All right, now we have a second reading, I need to introduce separate probably tax rate.
It's already been introduced, we should read. Ordinance number B two thousand seventeen dash thirteen, an ordinance levying and adopting is amended in ordinance style, an ordinance levying tax on property subject to tax in the City of Barstown fixing rates thereon and designated funds and purposes for which expenditures are authorized for the fiscal year July two thousand seventeen to June thirtieth two thousand eighteen. The City Council of the City of Barstown, Kentucky, just hereby ordains as follows, that there be and hereby is levying the sum of zero point one eight two zero dollars on each one hundred dollars of real property subject to taxation, the sum of zero point one nine one two dollars on each one hundred dollars of personal property subject to taxation, and the sum of point two four dollars on, zero point two four dollars on each one hundred dollars of motor vehicle and watercraft subject to taxation in the City of Barstown for fiscal year July first two thousand seventeen to June thirtieth two thousand eighteen. To all money senior after collected for the... Two, all money hereafter collected for the taxes due for the year 2017 and 2018 and all years prior thereto shall be allocated to the general fund for the general, the general expenses of the city government, including but not limited to recreation, police and fire protection, general government and the maintenance of streets and highways. Three, collection of property tax bills of $10 or less shall, may be waived by the Chief Financial Officer. Four, all taxpayers whose taxes are not paid by the last day of October or by the 30th day after the mailing of the tax bill, whichever is later, shall be, shall pay a penalty of 10% of the amount of taxes due and unpaid, and in addition thereof, shall pay interest on unpaid taxes at the rate of 1% per month or part thereof until paid. Five, a 2% convenience fee is levied on any credit card transaction payment on property tax bills. This ordinance shall be in full force upon its publication in all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict are hereby repealed to the extent of that conflict. And you need a roll call vote.
Okay. We've already introduced a motion for approval first.
Yes, sir.
Okay, need a motion then for approval, ordinance number B 2017-13, admitting our, our, keep the tax rate the same as last year. Motion for approval. So look, motion for councilman Copeland, we have a second.
Second.
Second, councilman Copeland. Any discussion? Okay, individual votes. I'll start with councilman Knowles. All in favor, city of Rob, saying aye.
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 Motion carried. Thank you. Tax rates be the same. Looks like then we're, you know, we've had some people sitting here have been very patient with us tonight, so we'll call on the, we have some representatives from the PATH Coalition, if they'd like to address the council about their work with the fire department.
And I don't want to, my name is Melissa Hall. I have a chairperson for the Barstown Nelson County PATH Coalition, and we do have a few councilpeople who, members who've come to our PATH meetings. And PATH stands for Prevention Advocates for Tomorrow's Health. And some of the strategies we put in the community, we're all volunteers now, and, but a lot of the strategies we put in the community now deal with the Narcan, the heroin and opioid, opioid overdose rates in our community. So, with that being said, we were able to secure a grant through Kentucky ASAP, which is Kentucky Agency for Substance Abuse Prevention, through our communicator, who is our stakeholder now. They hold our grant. Used to be the City of Barstown many, several years ago, until that large grant was lost. But now, like I said, it's mainly volunteer, it's all volunteer-based now. But through that grant, we were able to secure quite a bit of funds to help with the overdose deaths in this community. So one of those grants, Scott Lawson, one of your wonderful fire department members, he asked for money, so his fire department and the personnel there could get trained in Narcan application. So with that, we were able to secure $4,000 for him. So that helped train the Barstown Fire Department and the Barstown Police Department. Some other funds we did was about a year ago, I had an idea to, I asked an officer, what are you carrying when you're on the street and you find needles? Or someone overdoses and you see needles? And he said, well, we've been putting them in bags. So I was able to go on Uline and I purchased, I think, about 1,000 of the small sharks containers and then police officers keep those in their car. We want them to know if you ever need those, we can try to find the money again to fund some of those. Those are things that don't come out of your budget, that we are just doing because it's important to give back to our community and make it a better place to live. So with that being said, I have a, it's not a great plaque, it's not the most expensive, but we want to use our money in other ways. And since Scott Lawson is at my place of work today, he is actually doing our safety and first aid training where I work at. But if Mayor Heaton could accept this on the Barstown Fire Department's behalf, but we also want to thank everything that all of our first responders are doing. We are doing a little bit of work, but we know they're doing a lot to help the community be safe. And we welcome you all to any of our meetings. I promise to keep them within one hour because I have a full-time job. But anyway, it is actually, the PATH Coalition recognizes Scott Lawson and the Barstown Fire Department for their support in efforts to combat the overdose deaths by becoming trained in the Narcan application. So anyway.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Thanks for the support.
You're welcome.
Very valuable service for our, our...
Can I say one more thing also? I do appreciate anyone who would like to come to our meetings. I was listening to media specialist jargon and all that, but we have some really good commercials that I wrote and then I got with another committee member from the PATH Coalition, and we wrote a couple commercials, and they've been playing on PLG, Channel 6, and Keystone. So, and we get a lot of that in kind. They play, like if we pay for one year, especially like Gary White, he'll do it for another year. PLG has been great to give us a break on some prices on our commercials. But if you go to Keystone, look for those commercials, but I would love to be able to upload those to the city website, and I'll tell you why. People who move into this community want to know that we're being proactive in substance abuse prevention. And I think what a great way to show them that we have a community, organization such as PATH that's been around for 20 years, that is really addressing this problem and we're not shying away from the problem. We come up with strategies all the time and we want you all to know that. Okay? You're welcome. Thanks for having me.
Okay. We have another, we didn't get this on under the council comments, we have another group represented here tonight with Protecting Publicity Against Domestic Violence. So two other very patient people. So go ahead and make your presentation if you'd like to the council.
Thank you. Thank you all very much for being, for hosting us tonight. My name's Whitney Reynolds and this is Marjorie. And I am actually a Barstown native, so thank you so much to Keisha, who joined our board in June and has been such an asset and I want to brag on her for being what a board member is, a model board member, because she is jumping headfirst into our big fundraiser for the year, the Purple Purse Challenge. I'm going to let Marjorie talk more about that, but we are part of the Economic Empowerment Team at KCADV, and I'll let you kind of say what the Purple Purse Challenge is about that we are raising funds for.
Yeah, so thank you all for having us. I also, I lived in Barstown last year. I worked at Barton for the last year before I came to Kentucky Coalition Against Domestic Violence. So we're really honored to have Councilwoman Copeland working with us on this fundraiser. So it's put on every October, which is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And it's put on by the Allstate Foundation. So over 200 organizations across the United States participate in this fundraiser, and there are organizations that are focused on the economic empowerment of domestic violence survivors. So a lot of folks don't think about this, but one of, if not the primary reason domestic violence survivors stay in an abusive relationship is financial abuse or economic abuse. And so where our organization, primarily we fund and provide training to the 15 domestic violence shelters around the state, including Spring Haven down the road in, in E-Town, which is the, the shelter that serves this, this area development district. And then we also do our Economic Empowerment Program, which is, we provide credit counseling as well as microloans, matched savings accounts for survivors of domestic violence so that they can get on their feet and, and stay independent and stay on, on a good path. So the fundraiser that we're doing here in October goes to our Economic Empowerment Emergency Assistance Fund. And so that, all the funds that we raise during this Purple Purse fundraiser, and the purple is the, the color of domestic violence awareness and the purse is for economic empowerment. All the funds that we raise, every dollar that we raise during this fundraiser goes to the Emergency Assistance Fund. And that fund is there for all the shelters around the state to apply to on behalf of their residents or any survivor that comes to them with an emergency fee, either a utility, outstanding utility bill, a child's medical expense, an emergency car repair. And so these are things that if a survivor is trying to get back on their feet, they're trying to get their credit up, they're trying to start saving money so they can stay independent, these can really set folks back. So this, that's why we have this fund. We're really looking forward to it. It's going to be fun. I don't know if you all, can I pass these around? These are just little pamphlets with a little more information. So it's an online fundraiser, but we're also working with Councilwoman Copeland to do some events here in Barstown. I'm sure she will keep you well informed of those. And yeah, we're looking forward to it.
Can I add on to that? So we will be hosting a luncheon at the Country Club, Motte-Tucky Home Country Club, on October the 26th. And it would be informative, things that you haven't heard, personal stories, and also expertise. We'll also have our new chief, she'll be one of the speakers as well. The PATH Coalition will be there as well to give insight on this. You know, this is like a disease, really, because everyone you know, somebody, you know someone that has experienced domestic violence. In this room, I am a survivor. Face disfigured, it was just really horrific. And so I am so proud to, to be with you guys, but also to get into the fundraising part of what I used to do a long time ago. So we will have this luncheon, and I also challenge the council and the public, the council especially, there's a purple purse, and I ask that you take a picture with this purple purse. I'm not asking you to carry it all day long. I'm just asking you to take a picture, and this will go statewide. It'll be statewide, it'll be shown in different areas of the state. So I ask you to partner with me and, and accept that challenge and, and take a picture with that purse. Take a stand, you know? Be risky. And then also we'll have a community bonko that same day, October 26th, and those funds also will go to this fund. So I thank you so much for listening, and I hope that you do accept the challenge. If you do, you'll hear from Marjorie, and she'll be contacting you to take that little small picture. You don't have to carry it, just take a picture with it. The state representatives, the senators, the governor, all have accepted the challenge, and I hope that our city will accept the challenge as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ladies. Do I need to get a little outfit to go?
If you want to wear purple, you can. No, you don't.
They both wore purple much.
It's in the job description.
Okay. I just got a couple of, any other council, any announcements of this, this time?
I need to mention something.
Go ahead.
You know, right there. Chief, I know you probably haven't heard this, but you, you will hear it again. I've got a couple of calls this past week on the speeding on South 4th Street going into Wilkie Run Road. There's stop sign, but there's some other traffic to hit the hill and different places that go down there. And the residents on South 4th Street are really complaining that they're, and I'm sure when you make that news in the other areas of the police department, they're well aware of what I'm talking about. So just, I was asked to bring it up immediately again if we can somehow monitor that a little closer.
We sure will. I'll follow up with you on that.
Anything else with council members? Just for, we have size that the chief has organized, organized coffee with the cop for Friday morning, 8 o'clock.
It's from 8 to 10 at Fresh?
So invite everybody to be there for that. The West Wing Trail, I call it the Vi Duck or the Aqua Duck, or whatever you want to call it, the drainage improvement that we've got going there, it's pretty well finished. They're going to let some of the rock settle before they pave it, but it's operational now. Through traffic is permitted, so that project is going good. If you saw in the paper, Sunday's edition, we've got four firefighters that qualified for the next leg of a challenge called the Scott Safety Firefighter Combat Challenge that was in Missouri, and Mike Alvin and Derek Ribbons, Casey Hennessy and Ernie Powell is that team that won their leg, that leg, and we move on to the next leg of that challenge, which I think is going to be held, so, so congratulations to those guys. It's great that they win such a heavy competition there in the, I wish Ann Rose could be still here. The 4th Street Flageage Drainage Project, and it's going to start after the Arts of Craft Fair. You know, got to get through that. But it also will include some water line improvements as well. I spoke with Jessica Filatro today, you know, that's another issue all, it's only that we've got an 80-year-old water line basically serving our downtown residents and businesses. So any opportunity we get to upgrade that going forward, we're going to start identifying these opportunities and taking care of that one in that area. So that will start after Arts of Craft, which is in October. And then our street paving will start in October, in part of November. I spoke with Mago this week. They're probably going to get, get to our most essential needs this fall and then finish up the balance of it in April or May, but because they're pitched for time, which sometimes happens, but they're still getting completed at this budget here. So I've got Ben Bird identifying the more critical ones, trying to get them done now. And then the more balance of that will be finished up in April or May, still on this budget here. And then Jessica Filatro is completing all our interviews for a staff engineer, and Greg was with her on those, and she and I reviewed them today, and I think she's going to make an offer to an individual shortly, so we should know who that would be next week, I think. So a lot going on, a lot of personnel issues going on, a lot of projects going on, so it's important to get you all up to speed on that. Back to the agenda here. All right. We just have one cemetery dean for Ron DeKelly. And then, any of the council, have any other announcements? Seeing none. Okay, then we need a motion then to adjourn and go into executive session pursuant to KRS 61.8101C. Discussions of proposed litigation against the City of Barstown regarding a presentation and offer settlement, discussions concerning the offer of settlement. So need a motion to adjourn out of the regular meeting, go into executive session.
So...
Motion of Councilwoman Chek, is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any, any discussion? Councilman Knowles, second. Any discussion? All in favor then, say a aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We will be adjourned into executive session. Should we go back into regular session?
So moved.
Most of our council leaders have a second. Second, Councilman Butler, any discussion? All in favor then, say a aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Let the record show that during the executive session, no official action was taken, that Councilwoman Copeland accused herself of executive session for this part of the regular meeting. So I'm turning over now to our city attorney to discuss the matter at hand.
Yes, sir. We have, we being the City of Barstown has, have been made aware of, served with a claim against the City of Barstown made by Councilwoman Copeland as relates to actions taken, and they're outlined in, in offer to settle any kind of proposed litigation, that... Um, that, those actions that were taken by former administration and, um, that are well documented, I believe, um, by actions taken by this council. That offer of settlement, um, has been made. Uh, there is a settlement agreement, um, that in exchange for a, uh, one-time payment of $40,000, that there be a release of liability on the part of, uh, all, of the city of Barstown, uh, all former and, uh, current officers and employees and council people, elected officials. It basically is a blanket, um, a blanket release of liability for those, uh, actions as alleged. And, uh, at this point, uh, the Councilwoman Copeland has recused herself for obvious reasons, just like we had the accusations earlier for the, uh, Historic Review Board and, and matters that had, each individual had a, uh, had something before the board that they had an interest in. So at this point, um, I believe it's, um, the council, uh, may want to make a, uh, take action in the form of a motion. Um, and the motion, uh, would be, if, if someone wants to make the motion, the motion would be to empower the mayor to, uh, enter into a settlement agreement relating to those claims and to disperse those funds, that being $40,000 in exchange for that release of liability as I have explained.
To Councilwoman Copeland, that our attorney?
To Councilwoman Copeland, the interim attorney. Would be a payment made jointly to them, yes, sir.
Mayor, if I may have a floor then. I will make that motion to authorize the mayor to enter into the release and settlement of all claims agreement that has been presented to us. Uh, and to disperse the sum of $40,000 in settlement of the claims by council member Keisha Copeland.
And her attorney? Yes. And her attorney?
And her attorney.
Well, the dispersal would be, but if there's no claims by her attorney, that's not very nice.
Do we have a motion to have a second?
I'll second.
Second, the Councilman Buckland, second. Any discussion?
Yes, I'd like to kind of explain the reason why I made a motion and, uh, the, as part of the, uh, release and settlement agreement, which will be provided to everyone, there will be attached to it the, uh, outline of the offer that we, or the allegations, I guess, because actually there is a number in that document, but there will be an outline of the allegations in there. Um, we, I, uh, we, we searched hard on settling this and what our various positions were gonna be. Uh, we looked hard about what the city's liability would be and whether taxpayers should be paying money on this. And I think some of the things we looked at, uh, there is generally in the law if an employee acts, uh, in such a matter called legal liability when they're in the scope of their employment, that there can be a liability imputed on the employer. Same thing with the city and elected officials and officers, employees of the city. So that's why the city was brought into this and the, uh, is proposing, uh, and that claim was made against the city. We also, as a part of our investigation, we submitted this claim to our insurance carrier. Our insurance carrier responded that, uh, there would be, uh, they would probably, they, there was exclusions for each allegation that was made in the offer of settlement, uh, where they would not provide coverage for the city and possibly not even provide a legal defense. So we were looking to incur that. Uh, I personally and, and talked to some of the others, I did a lot of, as an attorney, I looked at it from an attorney's standpoint. I did a lot of research on this. Talked, Tim and I had a lot of discussions. Uh, I spent hours, multiple hours, uh, researching this. I even went, met with, uh, Mr. Sparks. We met for, I don't know, hour two or something, I think, uh, discussing all the aspects of the claims and everything. And, and of course, I read what I thought the defenses the city would make on it. I think we had chance on some of our defenses. There were certain claims that I was more concerned about than other ones. Uh, one thing I think Mr. Sparks and I did agree on is that the case law on some of the claims that were gonna be made are fairly sparse in Kentucky. So there was gonna be a risk involved in, uh, for both sides in pursuing this, uh, claim. So, uh, and, and I think everybody did a lot of soul searching and, but in the end, it's kind of a, uh, you, as, as I looked at it as an attorney and how I would advise an client. And for the sum that was settled upon, and it was a negotiated sum, it certainly wasn't original offer, uh, that I think it's in the city's best interest to, to settle for this sum. Uh, we were going to possibly incur attorney's fees. We're gonna have legal potential liability for it. And we can buy our peace with this and look forward to the future and not have to be involved in another long drawn-out litigation that, uh, these type of issues I think has drove the city down for the last several years. So, so that's why I'm supporting it.
Any other discussion by the council members?
Call for the question?
I would just like to.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm not sure I'll have a chance to vote or not, but I, I think, uh, I'd like to comment that, uh, I think it goes without saying that I very much disliked the events that happened last year that has preceded where we are with this proposed litigation. I don't think that any of us here, you know, elected council members or the city condone the actions, uh, of the former mayor and some of the employees. It goes without saying that our actions this year earlier with the investigation and the hearing and removal, uh, showed that we were serious about, uh, taking action against that type of activity within, within the city. At the same time though, I'm, I'm, I'm really struggling. I think it's, this is putting us in a very, very difficult situation as a council. You know, I don't like what happened last year. I don't really like being in the position we're in tonight because, uh, the settlement, uh, is being put on the shoulders of individuals who really had nothing to do with what happened last year. And those that did, they get a walk, they get to walk, you know, from a legal and a financial standpoint. And I find that troubling and I know some people in the community will find that troubling. But at the end of the day, it's our fiduciary responsibility to do what's right for our citizens and for the taxpayers and, um, to have to go through litigation and fund the cost of that. And then, uh, there's always gonna be a risk of, you know, a financial reward by a jury in this case. I think it's the most expeditious thing for us to do is to, uh, agree to this settlement and, uh, pay the, uh, the settlement agreement of $40,000. And it will hopefully allow us to put, uh, you know, another bad chapter in the history of the city of Barstown behind us and might have to go back through, uh, several more months of that being brought back out of the community publicity-wise and that it's reinforced with, with our job at hand. And that's, that's just the comment I'd like to make regarding what we are tonight.
I'd like to make one follow-up that I could. I do want, you know, don't want my discussions to reflect on Councilmember Copeland because ultimately she was a victim in what happened and she didn't ask that this be brought up on her. So I, you know, I just want to add that to it. It might not have been clear on that.
Any other discussion? Okay, we have a motion and a second. I'd ask for an individual roll call vote, uh, starting with Councilwoman Kelly.
Aye.
Aye.
The motion is carried. I don't think we have any other. Okay, I don't think there's any further business to be brought forward. The council is seated, so I entertain a motion for adjournment. Motion?
Yes, sir.
Motion for Councilman Buckland, second. Councilwoman Lee, is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Thank you all.